We'll begin with a flag salute. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, our staff will take roll call.
All right. Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Blakely?
Here.
Commissioner Doris, let us know that he wouldn't be here. Vice Chair Hallie?
Here.
Commissioner Kine?
Here.
Commissioner Mobley?
Here.
And Chairman Sykes?
Here, thank you. You have in your packet, fellow commissioners, the minutes from the March 28th meeting. If you want to look over those, and then we'll entertain a motion to approve. Or if there's any adjustments.
Motion to approve minutes from last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Very well, motion passes. At this time, we'll take oral comments from the public. Members of the public can be heard on any item of interest, not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Please be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take action on the issues presented during this portion of oral comments. We do not have any in person that I can see. Do we have any over Zoom?
We do have participants over Zoom, but I believe that they are all with the applicants.
Okay, now is the time, if any of those Zoom participants want to speak on any item not on the agenda, please do so. Or we'll entertain a motion to close oral comments from the public.
Um, whoops. I'll make a motion to close oral comments.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay. Staff, can you remind me, do, we can just close it down without a vote, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so we close oral comments at this time. Moving on to item four in our agenda, business. Our first item of business is the design review for Co-Central Credit Union, including building elevations, colors, lighting, and landscaping. You have papers in your packet, staff, please enlighten us.
Yeah, thank you Chairman Sykes. This is the new role, my name's Mayor Perry, I think I've met most of you, maybe not Brian, but I'm the city manager and also community development director. As you all probably know, Liz Shory retired a week before last Tuesday, so we're currently advertising for a new community development director, and in the meantime, you're stuck with me, and so I'm going to do my best to go through this, but I'll just say that Liz started this review, and then it came to Katie and I, and we finished it. So if you have questions on this Co-Central design review for the app, for the exterior improvements and site improvements at Co-Central, we'll do our best to answer those, and I will point out that we have members of the architectural firm and the applicant are on Zoom, so we should have plenty of folks here to be able to answer your question. So again, the item, the subject is the design review application for exterior improvements and site improvements at the Co-Central Credit Union at 1814 Main Street, and staff's recommendation is that the commission approve the proposed projects with the conditions of approval that are attached to the planning commission resolution P 2023-3101. Just basically, before we get into the presentation, the applicant is proposing a project that includes exterior improvements to the existing building, as well as site improvements that include a new drive-through ATM, a new retaining wall to allow for the driveway that will go to the new ATM on the north side of the building, redesigned drainage throughout the site, and new landscaping. And the items under consideration, design review, will consist of building elevations, building colors, landscaping, lighting, and the new signage. The proposed exterior improvements are consistent with commercial buildings in the area and show design elements that are modern and clean. The exterior building improvements include a new fascia, a new drive-through ATM with a metal canopy, new windows, a new bronze aluminum storefront and lighting. Building surfaces are painted board and battened and sealed cedar cladding, and the new landscaping is planned throughout the property, including new LID features that will replace existing turf, grass along the front of the property. So with that, I'd like to share a presentation and go through the plans for this project. Give me one moment. Okay, it looks like you're all seeing the presentation. So this is just an APN map that shows the location of the site. For those that aren't familiar with it, you can see it's along Main Street, right where Main Street turns into Ronerville Road. The parcels highlighted in red. You can see that it spans two zonings. The RC zone and the R110 zone. The RC is retail. Retail, commercial, and then there's a portion of the parcel, the back portion, that's an existing, within the residential R110 zone. Here's an existing site plan that shows what the existing layout is, and just a couple of things that I'll point out. Currently, they have a canopy that'll remain there, but a lot of the widening is going to happen in the back, so this is the existing, this is some of the turf that will be converted to an LID base, and that you can see along the front edge of Ronerville Road, and then the ATM would go towards the back. Here's what a street view photo of the existing building looks like, and this is the existing driveway that goes to the rear of the building on the right, and you can see the turf that would be replaced with the low-impact development drainage swale in the front. Again, this is another photo of the existing front of the building and the existing sign. So this is the landscaping and signage plan. Just a number of things, a few things to note. We'll get into the, the building elevations, but you can see the front of the building. I'll look at those building, we'll go into detail on those building elevations on future slides, but you can see the existing sign in the center of the screen, that's going to remain in place within the new LID feature. You could see all this darker area paving, that's going to be where there's more paving, there will be parking spaces to the rear, and you can see the location of the ATM to the back of the parcel. There's existing retaining walls back there now that hold back the hill, and so there's a new retaining wall that'll go along the back of that parking lot to hold up the slope to allow the, the width to be widened to accommodate that new ATM drive-through lane. And again, you have that overhanging canopy area where the existing drive-through teller spot is, that will remain there. And then you could see some of the contour grading for the LID feature that will, that will be landscaped, that's going to replace the existing turf in the front. Katie, anything else we should point out here?
No.
No. This is a screenshot, this is a landscaping plan, as you can see, one of the really nicer elements of this is that they're going to install a lot of new landscaping within those existing areas. And within the site plan, you can see the different types. Some are decorative varieties, others are native species, and there's a mix, some are, some are more ornamental variants of, of native species or similar. And they're all listed up above on the right. Here's a picture of some of the types of the landscaping and plants. You can see the, the, the tree type with the flowering pink blooms, it's a tuskegee myrtle, the, the blue blossom, or the cianothus, the cianothus is on the right. There's junkus, which are some of the rushes, and then the lower left, the yellow flowers are a variety of yarrow. So those are some of the plants that would be located in the various landscaped areas. Here's the elevations, you can see a number of things. Probably the, the biggest change to the front of the building is going to be the extension of that fascia in the front, so it'd be in the front, in the expansion of the vestibule to the front of the building. There's going to be updated colors, they'll be relocating the existing sign, which is currently white, turning that blue, and then they'll be centering that on the building, so the, the lettering that says Co-Central Credit Union. And then there'll be, let's see, what else? There's, there's a contrasting cedar, which is that sealed cedar in the front, so there'll be a wood look on a portion of that expanded vestibule, plus the aluminum storefront, which are the, the doors and windows at that, that front area that you can see in the middle of the south elevation. And then you can see the listings for the different paint colors that the fascia will be painted, so again, existing building, but some updates to the colors, to the signage, adding that wood cladding, and then expanding that facade along the top to come out and be even with, so the whole front would be even along the front. And then on the north elevation, you can see that existing drive-through area for the drive-up teller, also on the west elevation. And then here's just some of the, the slide showing some of the samples of some of the different types of material that will be used. The windows will match the existing out there, the paint colors are on the upper right, the aluminum storefront system, lower left, and then the wood, the picture of the wood cladding is on the lower right. One of the things that we looked at very closely was the lighting, because this area does, is next to existing residential areas, so they are all downcast lighting, and they are shielded, and then you can see the LED type strip, those are going to be installed underneath the drive-through teller, so those will be naturally blocked by that overhang for the drive-through teller. And then you can see on the left, there's some exterior soffit lighting that are within the covered areas as well. And then here on this, this sheet, you can see the elevation for the new drive-up ATM with a canopy that will be over that, and there's, there's elevations for that, as well as some of the details for the bicycle parking, trash enclosure, and the bike lockers. Okay, so with that, that concludes the, the presentation there. Staffs? So again, in, within the staff report, it includes a number of the general plan policies that this body will have to find that this project is consistent with, and so those are all listed there, I'm not going to read those. The design review findings, again, this committee, the scope of this design review is to look at the proposed location of the structure on the site in relation to the location of the other buildings on the adjoining sites, with particular attention to view considerations, privacy, topographic and other constraints, the extent which the site plan attains a minimum amount of grading or removal of trees, the size or bulk of the proposed building in relation to the character of the buildings in the vicinity. Again, there's not real significant changes to those buildings, just the front entryway, and then the details of the proposed site plan, including architectural landscaping treatment. And, and other areas. Also including the improvements to the existing buildings and site features on the same site, the design details required to achieve the purposes of this title, and then compliance with objective policies or standards of any policy. So, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt resolution 2023-3101, a resolution of the planning commission of Fortuna approving the design review of the building and site improvements at 1814 Main Street. And so, the attachments, one of the attachments in the resolution also include the standard finding, the standing, standard recommendations from community development as attachment A. So with that, we would be happy to answer any questions, and I know we have the applicant here as well. Katie, anything else?
Keep having it.
Okay.
Great job.
Excellent. Other commissioners, do you have questions for the city? Or the folks online on Zoom with representing Co-Central Credit Union?
Yes, the first one I would talk about was the retaining wall in the back and the properties above it, and the amount of water comes off, we all know the amount of water comes off. I know you guys talked about, you're going to be moving that water somewhere else.
Yeah, you know, the one thing I'd say, that'll be something that happens in the building permit review, and that'll be done by the engineering department, so it does fall out of scope of the design review, but that is something that our engineering will be looking at to make sure they have a geotech report, looking at the drainage, and I know Brendan, our public works director, has already looked at that, and he's already made some preliminary comments on the building review to make sure that drainage is appropriately diverted, and I think that Brendan gave you more comments than that, but again, it gets out of the scope of the, the design review, other than, you know, landscaping, the building color and character, and then the location of where things are on the site. But the drainage will be accounted for and will be picked up and considered during the building permit review.
The other one was as far as the traffic going through the back, you know, the, the width of it with the parking in the back, getting trucks through there.
Right.
That would be my.
Again, and that's, that's one of the things that we pick up on the building permit, so to make sure that we have adequate turning movements for the design vehicles for that site.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Sorry, this is a question for the architect. There is a proposed ATM vestibule inside the first set of double doors, is that going to be accessible to folks after hours who don't have vehicles?
Hello, my name is Brian, I'm the architect for the project. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Yes, that, a new ATM vestibule will have a card access control, so members can go into the vestibule safely and, and access that anytime.
So it'd be for members only if they have a Co-Central card?
Yes, I believe so. Kristen, is that correct?
I don't know if we've made that final decision yet, we were told that we can set it up to allow anyone with a debit card, so that non-members could also use the ATM, but you do have to have an active debit card in order to be able to get into the door.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions from the commission? If not, we will move to public comment. At this time, we'll go ahead and open it up for any public comment via Zoom or in person. Do we have any public comment?
This is Jim Sessa, the president and CEO of Co-Central Credit Union. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to mention it, but, you know, with the investment we're putting into the, the office down there, trying to improve the traffic flow and things of that nature, it would be really nice if the city of Fortuna would consider perhaps a roundabout to eliminate some of the confusion our members have as they exit our facility there in Fortuna. You know, there's a lot of advantages with having a roundabout, and we think that when we hear comments from our members, they have difficulties leaving the credit union, especially if they want to go south. And so, that's, I'd be really grateful if, yeah, the city of Fortuna invested in the front of our lot while we're investing, you know, in the community and our office. Thank you for listening to me.
We are happy to listen to you, thank you for your comment. Does staff want to respond in any way this time?
Sure, just through the chair and the city's, the, the programmatic EIR for the general plan, that's actually one of the mitigation, that's one of the projects that's proposed in there, and so we have a lot of projects on our list right now, and some of the most critical ones for us are the interchanges with Highway 101, and so, you know, we can't get all these things done at one time, and we have a significant effort, we're in the preliminary design and permitting stage for Kenmar and 12th Street, so we're, we're kind of going for those really big ones that affect the entire city first, and then we're working our way towards those other projects such as a roundabout at this location that could be done in the future. So again, we're, we're kind of going for the ones that have the most impact more quickly, but thank you Jim for your comments, we'll take that under consideration, and, you know, one other thing, we could maybe take offline and talk to you in the future, we could consider signage, if it would help get people into your parking lot a little easier, we could think of where there might be the ability to put some signs up that could get people moving in the right direction.
Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment? Do we have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment is closed at this time. So, as a commission, we have before us the recommended city action toward the bottom of page seven, as well as the resolution on page nine of our commissioner packet to help us, and we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution P 220, excuse me, P 2023-3101, a resolution of the planning commission, city of Fortuna, approving design review of building site improvement to 1814 Main Street, including elevations, colors, lighting, landscaping.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Ms. Schmidt will do a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Bennett?
Approved.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Ms., Vice Chair Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner Kine?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
And Chairman Sykes?
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. Okay, we're on to the next item of business, item two, which is consideration of an 18-month extension of, of an approved tentative map to subdivide a 5.99 acre parcel into two parcels, two acres, and 3.99 acres in size.
Thank you Chairman Sykes, so that is the recommendation, the details are in the staff report, most of those are from the original, but just a, a brief background, this, the original subdivision was conditionally approved on November 12th, 2019, and, and it was good for a period of 24 months with an expiration date of November 11th, 2021. The applicant submitted a written request to extend the subdivision for 18 months that the planning commission approved on December 14th, 2021, and the current, that, that latest extension is set to expire on May 11th, 2023, and so the applicant has submitted a second 18-month extension that would extend the map to April 21st, 2023. And so, this is allowed, there's a description of the project that came with the original subdivision, that's in the staff report. There, they, they have the ability, and the commission can grant the request for extension if there were any new, you know, the city has the ability to add new conditions if they wanted to, if there's, if the standards for health or safety have changed over time, and so right now, we don't know of any health or safety standards that have changed over time, and we're not recommending any conditions for this extension. And so, with that, that really concludes the staff report, unless you have any further questions, it's pretty straightforward, extension. And the resolution, again, is attached to the staff report.
Very good, are there any questions of city staff from our commission? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment, do we have any public comment in person or over Zoom on this consideration of the 18-month extension? Do we have a motion?
Motion to close public comment.
Excellent, and a second?
Second to that motion.
We'll close the public comment, and we are ready to move on to a motion on business item two.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number P-2023-3102, a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving an 18-month extension for the Tan Farani tentative map.
Second. We have a motion and two seconds, we'll now take a roll call vote.
I think Michael Kine.
We'll give it to Commissioner Kine.
All right, roll call vote, Commissioner Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hallie?
Yes.
Commissioner Kine?
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley?
Yes.
And Chairman Sykes?
Yes. Okay, motion passes, we're moving on to item three of business, consideration of the fiscal year 2023, 24 five-year capital improvement programs consistency with the general plan, and we'll turn it over to staff to talk, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much for having me here tonight, it's my annual trip to the planning commission, it's been too long, maybe I can come back more often. With that, I'm very happy to present the draft 2324 Capital Improvement Program, and I'm going to bring up a brief presentation I have prepared for you here, just give me one moment. Okay, so, going through a quick background of, I guess, what I'm going to go through my presentation, just to kind of orient ourselves, I'm going to talk a little bit about what a capital improvement program is, why it's important for the city of Fortuna and all local agencies, and, and why we go through this exercise every year. The capital improvement program is something we do do every year, and because of that, project cycle in and out, so we'll be talking a little bit about projects that have been completed and removed, in addition to projects that have been added this year to the five-year capital improvement program, and then we'll end talking a little bit about, you know, just for general informational purposes, what projects we have, you know, actively in some phase of construction or work going on right now. And I'll end with the staff recommendation. So the capital improvement program, or what we refer to it as CIP, what is it? It's a document that we use as a planning tool to help plan for and budget projects that are required to keep the city of Fortuna both in, you know, proper states of maintenance, but also to advance the goals of the city, various ones that are included in the general plan, so as we talk about things like interchange improvements, and, you know, expansion of utilities, addition of parks or park space, things of that nature, the capital improvement program offers and provides us a framework to identify projects, to plan for projects, to budget for projects, and implement projects. We do that every year as part of the budgeting process, and so, the first year in any five-year capital improvement program is intrinsically tied to the budget itself, and it is part of the budgeting for that year. The remaining four years is that look ahead, it's that thinking about, you know, the projects and the goals and priorities that we have as we are coming up in future years, and how we help kind of identify planning and budgeting purposes as we, you know, move through all five years of a, of a CIP process. So one important component of the CIP is that we put together projects and we propose improvements that are also consistent with the goals as identified in the city's general plan, to make sure that, you know, from a public works perspective, and from what we're providing as an overall city, is consistent with the goals and the visions that have been identified in the general plan and, and, you know, by the, all the comments and visions that have been included therein. So the, the purpose of, of having this here tonight is, is to present the finding, you know, which staff have found, is that the projects and all the things included in the CIP are all consistent with goals specifically outlined in the general plan, and you'll find in attachment A in the staff report, you know, the analysis that we have gone through, looking at all the different, you know, goals in the general plan versus the types of projects we have, and we have found them to be consistent. So moving over to talk about projects specifically, I wanted to start out with projects that have been removed from this year's capital improvement program, so things that would have been in there this time last year, but have since been completed and removed. This project is actually the Jameson Creek project on Ronerville Road that was substantially completed in, I guess, calendar year 2020. It's stuck in the CIP for a few extra years because we did have small amounts of activity. It was a grant-funded project, so we had the ability to go in and do a couple items of work in subsequent years to kind of button up the site and ultimately close out the grants. So, that is the first and most major project that was removed and completed from the CIP in this, going from last year to this year. Only one project coming out of a CIP, it always sounds a little weird, because I know we're a lot busier than that, so only seeing one removed always makes me do a little bit of a double take, but we do have a number of active projects right now that are really close to coming out, we have included them in the budget, just to make sure that we have enough to carry over from this fiscal year to the next, should we need to, should construction not go quite as fast as we hope for, but we are very close to completing the Roner Park basketball court project, which some of you may have seen some activity on over in, in Roner Park right now. That's a Measure E funded project to put two new regulation basketball courts with acrylic striping and surfacing over the existing area of the park. We are working on re-roofing our corporation yard down at the city's corporation yard on Dinsmore Drive. We're working on installing a number of stationary emergency generators at a number of our critical water facilities, so that staff can spend our time during large power outages or, you know, issues we had like with the earthquake, working in other areas that we need to, and not lugging around a lot of portable generators which have their own issues. And then lastly, we are working on a number of paving projects right now, typically we would have liked to have gotten done a little earlier in the year, but given the rain and kind of the weather we had over the winter, winter paving, as we have called it, has not really been a reality for us this year, but we are looking on doing some paving improvements on Smith Lane, near the Kenmar Interchange, and along South Fortuna Boulevard in between Newburgh, Newburgh Road and Redwood Way. So for projects added to the CIP, we had five that were put in this year across kind of all the disciplines we think about, and I'll just kind of go through in a list right here, by all means, if you do have any questions, you know, feel free to ask. We did add the first project, which is the Carson Woods Road and Newell Line, or Newell Drive Waterline Replacement Project, these are areas prone to a lot of maintenance issues for our water line within the city, and during the last two years with the earthquakes we've had, both of these areas have presented a lot of, of leaks and a lot of instability, kind of with the older material of the pipe, so we recognize these as areas that we really need to make, you know, improvements and replacements on, to make sure that we have solid resilient infrastructure and that our crews can spend time, you know, working in other areas, and we don't have to keep going back to the same areas, we know, you know, present some challenges for us. The next one. for us. The next one is a wastewater project, the sanitary sewer collections CCTV or closed circuit television. The city is required, under a settlement agreement with an outside agency, to inspect and to camera all of our sanitary sewer lines that are over 20 years old. We have been working diligently to the extent we can to do all efforts in-house, but we do have excess of 55 miles of sewer line. So there's only so much we can do. So we are budgeting for some additional horsepower to be able to bring an outside contractor in to complete the project by the noted timeline that we have to do for the settlement agreement if we need to. For a drainage project, we added the Ninth Street Culvert Project. There is an old cast-in-place box culvert that runs up Ninth Street in and around Christian Ridge and Picnic Avenue, something that actually was an old piece of county infrastructure that came in when we annexed that area. It's, it's aging and it's had some issues. We've had to do some spot repairs up there for localized failures. And we'd really like to start to plan to kind of attack that whole stretch of old culvert in, you know, in the fashion that we can to, in order to make sure that we're kind of getting ahead of failures as opposed to being behind failures. So that's one we're working on. Another one that was added was the Corporation Yard Generator. Currently, our Corporation Yard located down off of Dinsmore Drive, which we are actually re-roofing. I mentioned that one a moment ago. It's one of the only major facilities we have that doesn't have stationary backup power. So whenever our annual earthquake hits on December 22, I guess, the power goes out, we, you know, staff are reporting to, to work and to respond to all the things that we need to. And we don't have any power source down at the Corporation Yard. So we're working in the dark, you know, the mechanic shop isn't going. So we're able to receive a grant from the USDA, which is going to fund, I believe, about 50 or 55% of the total project cost. And we're going to be installing a stationary generator there so that we have backup power and more ability to be able to, you know, work through outages and other difficult situations as they arise. And then the last one, again, there's a lot of earthquake flavor to the CIP this year, is the Monday Club Chimney. As I'm sure everybody has, has been able to see over the last few months, this last earthquake was kind of the end of the Monday Club Chimney, unfortunately, which we had to get removed to the extent we could immediately after the earthquake, just to make sure that we didn't have a safety issue. And now we're working on planning for the replacement of a chimney. We're, we're trying to get with an architect and get a professional services agreement together to make a plan and to go towards budgeting. And we're hoping that actually working with our risk pool that, you know, we can get the replacement and the demolition covered under the insurance that the city is part of with our risk pool. So for some upcoming projects, I don't mean to go into any of these in, in great detail, but by all means, if any of them pique your curiosity or if you have questions, feel free to ask. This is a list of other projects that we are in some form of active work on or will be worked on soon. We have our Vansel Reservoir Site Rehabilitation Project. So Vansel is the city's main emergency storage reservoir located on Vansel Street, up off of Vista Drive in that area. We've recently done some timber harvesting up there for fire protection and maintenance issues. And we're going to be working up there a little bit more to fix some other drainage and fencing issues. We are currently working on replacing a well down at the city's water source, which is on Eel River Drive, kind of by the strawberry patch there. We are about a week or two away from beginning a water tank recoating project. The city operates a 1 million gallon and a 250,000 gallon steel water tank, which are going to be taken offline so that we can sandblast them and recoat them with new coating material. Given that it's steel, it needs to be, it needs to be, you know, coated to keep corrosion away over time and to keep those pieces of infrastructure working well. We have a small sewer replacement project we're working on over on P Street in between Ninth and Garden. We will be starting a drainage and LID project on 12th Street here in about a month. That'll be in between K Street at Bob's and between, I guess, North Lonnie Drive. We'll be installing a number of rain gardens along the, the stretch of 12th Street there, in addition to extending the city's storm drain pipe up to K Street. We're always working on our citywide paving and concrete projects. And I spoke a little bit about those projects we're working on. We're working on an ADA barrier removal project, which is going to include ADA upgrades principally along N Street in between the 11th Street bus stop and the library. We are working on design for an expansion of facilities at Newburgh Park. The city was able to acquire, I believe it's an 8.4 acre adjacent parcel there. You probably see that vacant field that folks park in for the 3rd of July festival. We have some funding that has, we have some funding this year and some more funding next year through Measure E. And we're going to be looking to complete design for some new regulation soccer fields over there, in addition to a parking lot and some other facilities, you know, that would be part of expanding the use principally for soccer in that area. You know, we don't have enough funding to deliver the whole kind of pie in the sky of everything we'd like to. But we're trying to make a plan and get it in place and get some construction plans together and see how we could incrementally phase some of those improvements in. And then lastly, the Corporation Yard Generator Project, I mentioned that, that's an ongoing active project. And then really the big one we have going right now that I'm sure a lot of folks are interested in is the remodel of the former EPT building at 2600 Newburgh Road to be turned into the police facility. That's been under construction now for in and around two months. And we anticipate hopefully by the end of the year or very early 2024 that that facility will be fully ready to go. So with that, we have reviewed the full capital improvement program and reviewed all the goals and policies in the city's general plan. And it is our finding that the 2324 capital improvement program and the projects specifically are consistent with the general plan, and they advance the goals, both of the general plan and of the city. And it is my recommendation that the commission make a finding that, that have exactly that, that the, you know, the program is consistent with the general plan. So with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. And I really appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you. Questions to city staff from commissioners?
What kind of coating are you putting on those water?
It's, it's, I believe it's like kind of an epoxy based coating. They make a number of ones that I believe they call, I'm going to butcher it, it's NSF something. There's a basically a drinking water standard coating that can be put on as part of like a two or a three coat epoxy system. Basically, you know, you get, you get the tank down to, to clean metal, and then you can put that on. And they tend to last for about 20 or 30 years. And again, they're, you know, rated for drinking water, so.
But it doesn't come in contact with drinking water?
It does, yes.
This is the outside of the tank?
It's the outside and the inside. So, yes, yes. So we drain the tanks, we take them offline. The outside gets a different coating because it doesn't have to come in contact and it has to have a little bit more resilience for the elements. And the inside is formulated again to be, you know, safe to be used in drinking water and then to also be a little more resilient in a wet environment. So.
Oh, that makes sense. I must have misread. I thought it said outside only.
Oh, yeah. If it, you know, the project initially was an outside only and as it's, it's been in the, you know, five-year capital improvement program for a number of years. And this is when it has fully come into fruition. With where we are now, the recommendation at this point is to do outside and inside. And to do the outside, you do have to drain the tank anyway, because as you can imagine, you get kind of a condensation effect if you have a steel tank that's full of water and it can present issues with coating it. So we felt it prudent, if we're going to drain it anyway, to prep it and make sure that we do it all in one shot. And we're not coming back in a few years to drain it again, just to do the inside. So.
Then it doesn't sound so expensive.
Yeah, exactly. Try and economize where we can.
And Brendan, did you, did you mention that we're matching the existing colors?
I did not. But yes, we would plan to match the existing colors, which are green. I don't think we'll jump into purples or magentas anytime soon. But yeah. And then that, just so you know, it's the tanks, you'll see the Campton tank, which is the one you see if you're driving on School Street East, you'll see it up kind of on the hill behind Mill Street. So you do see that one. Again, it'll go back as a shade of green. So maybe it'll, maybe you've never seen it and that's a good thing because it's green. The Hillside Tank is located way up in the northeast of the city limits on private property. So that's not a visible one unless you're the property owner there, but.
Further questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment?
We do not have any public left on Zoom.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close public comment?
Motion to close public comment.
And a second?
Second.
We'll take a voice vote on this. All in favor to close public comment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. We are looking at recommended action to receive the staff presentation. And I'm looking at page 30. We're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion, motion to find that FY 2023 dash 24, five-year capital improvement program is in conformance with the Fortuna general plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a voice vote on this. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We will now move on to item five of all of our business, which is Planning Commission Staff Communication. Item five of the agenda, I'm sorry. We're done with our business.
I just have a couple of items that I wanted to mention. We're going to have two pretty big, significant things coming up for this planning commission. And I don't have exact dates yet, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. One of them that's really exciting is we're working on a specific plan for the former Palco Mill Site, which is now being referred to as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. And we're starting to get some of the preliminary concept designs in from the developer. And we're taking a look at those. And we're going to try to work with a developer to come up with it, you know, really a shared vision for that specific plan. And so we're looking forward to bringing that to some public meetings. One of those public meetings, or perhaps more than one of those meetings, will be the planning commission. So we're excited. A lot of people in the community are interested about that and the potential. And so that's going to be a pretty big deal. And ultimately, we will be looking at doing a general plan amendment and zoning updates to allow for the development of that site and allowing different uses than have been allowed in the past. Right now, it's, the general plan designation is mixed use and the zoning is heavy industrial, which obviously those aren't the same things. And so the lack of knowledge about what infrastructure needs need to be done and what can be actually built there have really been an obstacle. And there's been no, no, no real prior effort by the previous owners. So it recently sold to a gentleman who's a developer from Sonoma County. And he has indicated a real willingness to work with the city. So I'm excited to bring that to the planning commission and to the public in the near future. One of the other things I'd like to mention that we're working on, we're working on design standards for multifamily and mixed use housing. So multifamily projects could proceed outside of a discretionary basis if they meet certain design standards. So that's something that this board will probably want to weigh in on, on those design standards. And so we're working with a consultant. We have an SB2 grant for those. And this, this planning commission is really going to be one of those bodies that we're going to be counting on to look at those and, and give it a good, good review to make sure that they make sense for the community. So those are probably the two biggest things I think that we have coming up. I don't have exact dates. You'll probably see the design standard, standards first, and then the, you know, the mill site for, you know, action will be down the road. But we might have just a public meeting that is, is, you know, also a planning commission meeting, not, not to find, make any decisions, but just to have a public meeting and to be able to have the planning commission involved in that. So those are two big things that are coming up.
Any questions? Before we entertain a motion to adjourn, just want to acknowledge that this is our first meeting without our primary point of contact with city staff, which would be Liz Shory. We wish her well in her retirement.
Yep.
And acknowledge her service to our city and community and this commission. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
And a second? Very well, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bennett.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
And Chairman Seitz.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.